You can create admissions criteria, which you could also be doing tonight or could do in May.
Would you be comfortable with that this board did an endorsement of everything and then come back in May and fully vote as you flush things out?
Yeah.
Well, because now Jay and Jay has to create some admission guidelines for Blueberg, right?
So that would give you endorsement from the board.
He didn't know that, you know, until just now.
I know, you told him about it.
I saw her mark it on the report.
He knows now.
I, I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't think we need a motion on that, we're just endorsing it.
No.
So I think you have full support.
I, I hear you, thank you. That's, yeah, that meets my needs. My second item has to do with strategic planning. Again, I've attached, look, I wrote, I put letters on these. So B, you've seen, some of you have seen some of these pages before. We have eliminated the athletic logos from these sheets and I am hoping, and I understand next week we could have additional conversation with the Alton Board, I am hoping that these icons for the website's purposes are acceptable at least. I understand we'll, we'll keep using the logo that's in Alton Central School the way we're using it probably. But these all, these all match, which is nice. And then for your reference, at the end, I've included an early draft, I'm not even sure that the name is right, but this is the blended learning innovation program that we've been developing kind of in the background that I haven't reported to you on in a while, but you can see that the, the logo, the icon, follows the same format as the others and we're using the same type styles. So I'm holding off on the athletic logo development part of this, I've eliminated those from these pages. And that's, but again, showing you this for a second time after a little bit of revision because when this website goes live, this is what it's going to look like. And once again, I would hate for you to turn to me in May and say, you don't like the way this looks.
I really like the logo continuity.
Yeah.
And I think the bears is a big upgrade for us.
Agreed.
Yeah.
We'll get back to the athletic part of this in a couple of minutes. My third item has to do with the Alton Police Memorandum of Understanding, which is both an Alton Board and a Joint Board item in your packet, and this was in your email also. Here's a copy, the red, the red is mine, you may recall, I showed it to you two or three months ago. The blue is what the, the chief came back with, we met and went through all of this together last week and I am now comfortable. So, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read all of this, but as soon as you're comfortable, I'm ready to ask you to endorse this so that we can get it signed. And if you're not ready to do that tonight, we'll just put it on your agenda as an action item for May, that's up to you.
I think I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the MOU with the Police Department, J I C D dash R.
Second.
Further discussion? See you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, mentions?
The school calendar you approved on February 7th, however, at the time, you may recall, we had a conversation about the block days, which this year have been on Tuesdays and Thursdays and that has not been entirely satisfactory to a bunch of different people for a bunch of different reasons. But Jay can elaborate on if you need any elaboration. So he came back after your discussion and consulting with, I think, the original scheduling committee or at least members of it. And their recommendation is next year to simply put those block days next to each other on Wednesdays and Thursdays and how that solves the problems, he can explain if you're interested, but that's what this is. I like it.
I'm interested.
You're interested in hearing the explanation?
Yes.
This year, teachers struggled, realized very quickly that by having a traditional day with all seven periods meet in between the two block days, it puts one class ahead of the other if they are teaching the same class. So they found themselves ultimately having to create double the lesson plans. And even though everybody gets the same lesson by the end of the week, the order in which it was taught became challenging. So the solution, we had discussed this back in September, I think. And we said, no, let's push through this year and we'll reexamine it in the spring. So by, by putting these back to back, if I do the lesson on the Bill of Rights on Tuesday, I then do the lesson of the Bill of Rights on Wednesday, or I'm sorry, if I do the lesson on the Bill of Rights on Wednesday with some of my classes, I then do that same lesson on Thursday with some of my classes. I come back to Friday and they've all had the same lesson by that time. That makes sense.
I move that we accept the change to the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, calendar's good.
Okay, um, that was D, so now E. This goes to, so, so last year we did this, um, nope, I'm sorry, I have one without a handout. Let me talk about this one first, the Scholarship Foundation idea. So I found an attorney who will do this and some folks who will donate the funds to pay our fees because this is not a district activity, this is not a taxpayer-funded initiative, this is ultimately going to be an independent 501(c)(3). And in its bylaws, I, which I'm going to help write, I anticipate the Board of Directors having to include a school board member from Barnstead and a school board member from Alton, but also other representatives from the community, maybe at least one from each town, probably at least one school district official, if not two. And, and once that's all done and filed with the Secretary of State, there will be an independent nonprofit scholarship foundation set up to benefit students at Prosser Mountain High School. There is a gentleman in the community ready to donate in the neighborhood of eighty-five hundred dollars to help this get going. I have had conversations with members of the PMTA Executive Board who are excited about helping out and I've met a couple of retirees who I wasn't previously acquainted with. So I am trying to plant seeds that could grow into our first scholarship foundation golf tournament next spring. The Alton Police Association has a golf tournament in the fall, so we will play in theirs and hopefully they will play in ours. And we'll just have it at a different time of the year. So that's just an update on that. I want to keep you in the loop at least for now, I don't know that I'll keep coming back every month until maybe I can come tell you that it's done and it exists and that you need to elect a couple of board members. So on budget administration, this goes to my next handout, which is labeled E. And I'm going to talk about the content of the handout, third out of three things here. Last May, we had a series, speaking of committees that haven't met in a while, we had a series of shared services committee meetings to talk about some combinations of services for this year. There were five or six different areas and we spent a lot of time talking about a lot of changes. For next year, I'm not here to propose nearly as many changes, change is hard. But in terms of athletic program administration, you already know from the budgeting process that we have a total of about thirty-four thousand dollars plus the associated social security costs budgeted that could fund a part-time athletic director for all three schools. So, and I think it was your suggestion, I have asked Mr. Gezokas to organize and leave that. And that means creating a job description, advertising, conducting interviews and bringing us a candidate for that. I think that, I think that's a part-time job by definition. And then once, once you have appointed, because ultimately we will bring a candidate to the Joint Board, I would look for Mr. Gezokas and the athletic director to then assemble a system-wide group of stakeholders, parents, folks involved with youth leagues, Parks and Rec Department, representatives from, from both towns, along with folks with, with interests in the varsity, you know, the most competitive programs at the high school level, to start talking about sort of the mission vision and values of athletic programs in general at our schools, all of them. So that's athletics. In special education, our Director of Special Education has informed me, she didn't just do it, I've known for a long time, but she has told me it's okay to inform you, that when she signed her two-year contract last year, it was with the intention that she is going to retire, she's at the end of her career after next year. So that's when I expect to recommend that we move to employing one system-wide Director of Special Education. If that sounds terrifying to anybody, I don't blame you, but I want to remind you that this is how most school districts operate with one other little change, which we've already implemented here at the high school this year. And that is that we appoint an IEP team chair, that's not always the title that's used, but it's usually a similar kind of a job description and we have one at each school. So what I would like to do is to take the job description and compensation terms that we've already implemented here at the high school to the other two schools. So we'll talk about that at your next two local board meetings, but we've kind of already been planning for this, it's just a matter of making sure you're okay with us doing it. So again, we'll have this conversation in Alton next week, we'll have this conversation in Barnstead later in the month. If we do this, it gives everybody a year to learn together. It's one of Ruth's primary responsibilities to, to help implement these things while she's here to do it so that at the end of next year, we're ready to move into the future. And yes, if you think ahead to next year's budget, that does mean that we will be eliminating an entire position from shared services. Third out of three topics here, has to do with information technology and that brings you to the handout. As you already know, our, our CTO who started this year has decided to move on at the end of the year. And we've learned a lot, it was a rocky first half of the year for sure, but we have been doing very well since January. Things are, things are working out. They've gotten caught up on, on help desk tickets, we've learned a lot about our infrastructure. Next week in Alton, some of you will see that we've, we've gone out to bid and we have an entire, a network infrastructure project to propose for the summer with E-rate funding. We'll have the same thing in Barnstead, but not till the following summer. But we've, we've been able to get our arms around a whole lot of things in IT. We've also learned that I think we can be set up more efficiently next year. So right now, we have two management employees plus 3.4 full-time equivalent support technicians. I'm proposing that we have a total of five employees next year and this handout kind of maps out what that would look like and the total cost, which is forty-nine thousand one hundred eighteen dollars less than we're spending this year. And the reason I'm pointing this out to you, for more detail, we'll, we'll get to that in personnel, I have some non-public things I'd like to discuss with you on this topic, but the reason I bring it to you here in my report is I am aware that first the Finance Committee and then the rest of you made some cuts in the budget that you didn't probably want to, but you had a financial target in mind. And I am telling you that I think we're going to save forty-nine thousand dollars in the technology function next year. And I'm wondering if you would be okay with the Principal and Matt Gezokas and I working together to evaluate some of the things that were cut here at the high school, particularly in terms of administrative support that we might be able to fund using some of this money. That would mean that Heidi would probably ask you to do a function transfer, but that could come later. We don't need to, need to have that done even until the end of next year. But once we start over or underspending functions, if you're surprised, we've done it wrong. So this is the beginning and I wonder if, if you'd be okay with us having that conversation with Jay over the next month and then coming to you in May if we've found something that we think it makes sense to put back in?
Sure.
That's a good idea.
Consensus, everybody?
Or just nods?
I see you nodding.
Yes.
I'm okay, as long as you keep nodding. Jay, they nodded, right?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick technology question, which I always forget to ask you? How is data being handled in terms of the SISs? Because you really have three different student information systems, right?
Well, we only have two different ones.
Well, but.
But two of them never interact.
Yeah, okay.
So, so we use Power School in both elementary schools and we use Infinite Campus here at the high school. And it's on our two or three years from now list of things to do. Or to look at, I should say.
Well, not in terms of merging, in terms of personnel, is, is Matt kind of the SIS person, database person? Or is it being handled in school offices?
So it's, it makes that. Here in SIS, I do a lot of it at Barnstead, they would be in office, but we need to be a lot of assistance for them. We have to, you know, clean up our line because they were using different structures for, you know, as far as student numbers and we wanted to pull that across the board. So as to say down the line, we do have a lot of planning to do to bring it into one system. And obviously we would want, you know, my department, I'd say, to handle it all rather than having too many hands in the pot from the offices. Because when I created the three, it was kind of overwhelming how different they were all done and handled in one. So the answer is to mix that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's just to say you might need a database person in the future to round out the team.
If that is possible, I don't really think we do. I think that the end between the system admin and the technical. We're not having the district to, I don't know, use a pool like that. SIS takes up minimal portions of, like, a lot of workload, the distribution of, between the three of us. A big district, I would say yes, obviously, because the most students you have is that. It does take up, it's, it's a minimal, maybe five, 10% of our workload.
Thanks, Matt.
After the next two years, we've worked out at least roughly a schedule of replacing wireless access points. At the elementary schools, a lot of this is going to be done all at once in the next couple of years with, with help through E-rate funding. But after that, we're trying to establish a schedule of access point replacements, switch and firewall replacements. And then, I don't know if it's every 10 years, but on a longer cycle, wiring. But just so that it's all planned out, partially for cost reasons, although it doesn't really matter to you if Alton Central School and Barnstead Elementary School are doing something like that in the same year, but it matters to our staff.
Yeah.
Because every summer, we want them doing one of those big projects, not multiples. So, so that's part of what we've done. First, we started to look at a, a Google domain merger for this summer. That's looking more like it'll be the following summer, which is probably for the best, even though I'm eager to have it done. And now if you come back to student information systems, we're, we're a few years down the road. And I don't want to assume that we'll go to one or what it might be, but I think we at least need to have a real conversation about it.
I'm just going to put in a plug, can we at least put the school board members on the SAU's domain? Because it really is difficult, I think, for some of the school board members to check two different.
Yeah, I'm actually planning to, Matt doesn't even know this. So going into the new fiscal year, I'd like to give you all, my, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but when you get emails from me now, they come from PMSAU.org. I'd like to put you all on PMSAU.org because every, every time you get an email and I have thirty email addresses at the top, I have entered them manually. Because we can't create groups in multiple domains. We can only have groups, and so every time I email you all, I actually type all those, well, the beginning of every one of those email addresses. So we're going to put you all, I, I can't imagine you would, I was, I wasn't even going to tell you, I was just going to do it. You'll have one email address.
Would we have that security key likely?
That's up to him.
I'd rather not.
He'll stay out of that one.
You can do it with your phone, though.
Don't, it's the third rail, don't touch it.
That's why I don't check your post, Matt, it's only on my laptop.
So we'll come back to you in May in, in personnel, but I wanted you to, to see where I think we're going to end up in the technology function. Again, I know, I know how budgeting works, you know, in, in, in previous years, we've talked about eliminating one or two or 1.4 FTEs and not been specific about what that meant. And then when we got to this part of the year, I would just nominate employees and that would kind of be the end of it. But this year, the conversation has been much more detailed. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that this is really what happens behind the scenes with administering the budget. Once we start working with the approved budget, we find areas where we might be able to come a little under and that allows us, and in this case, since you've already been really engaged in this conversation, it makes sense to me to have it with you. You know, we, we can choose now to leave that money to ultimately become unencumbered surplus next year or we can go back to a school where you probably cut things, again, that you really didn't want to. And, and we can talk about that. So I'm sure everybody, at least the three of us, will be excited to have that conversation. Thank you. Let's see. Safe school zones, so item F is a memo to our three principals and our SROs and police chiefs. Regarding one, the Safe Schools Act is part of 193D, but Section 4 of the Safe Schools Act requires written reports when certain things happen in schools. It reads an act of theft, destruction, or violence, but there's additional rulemaking from the Board of Education that actually lists specifically what those things are that fall into, that fall under the umbrella of this law. The reason that's important is that each principal is required by this law to write a report and send it to the police anytime one of those specific things happens in the school. And the schools have been doing it, but in different inconsistent ways. And by bad luck, just in the last couple of months, we've found a couple of things that slipped through the cracks. So what we've done is I've asked with this memo for the principals to provide training to all staff because that's where our slips have been, it hasn't been the principals failing to fulfill their duties under this law. It's been staff maybe not understanding, oh, I need to tell the principal about this. So they'll handle the training end of it, but then to help with the administration and the communication, Matt Gezokas has worked with Chris Reeves here at the high school to create an electronic form that the principals can use, which is great because it will create a database that helps us with end-of-the-year reporting, which we're also required to do under this law. And, and it will also automatically be emailed to the SROs. So it'll take care of the written reports to the police as soon as the principal fills it out. And again, the principals will take care of the training piece. You looked like you wanted to say something. So I have this here as an FYI, unless you want to treat it as something else. I don't know if, insert G made it in.
Yes.
Yes, do you have it? I'm not sure I do, but I've read it a few times. I know, it's good. So you all have seen this before, the Alton Board has seen it month after month throughout the year. The Barnstead Board saw it last month for the first time, thanks to the hard work in Alton. Barnstead might get to move a little faster with this one. The only new piece I have for you from the last time we talked about it is that one of the lawyers from Boston's GLAD headquarters reached out to me. I don't know how, but they ended up with a copy of this procedural guide in their possession. And we all know that this is a controversial topic in New Hampshire right now and schools are struggling trying to balance the legitimate interests that parents have in knowing what's going on with their children, with everybody's interest in making sure that children are accepted and welcomed in our schools. And they are considering using this as a model to try to start developing something that they could recommend across the state. I'm going to have the pleasure of sitting on a panel for them sometime later this spring. So this is guidance, this is a procedure. We, there, there was a vote in Alton last month and I encourage that because I know it's been such a high-profile and important item, but I would also remind you that you tell me to create procedures and I do it all the time without coming back and having you approve them. So my intention is to, I've already shared this with the principals, we've already been talking about this. My intention is to do some staff training at a minimum with our counseling and social worker teams. And, and just, I, I think, I think staff want clarity, that's all. People want to know what to do. You know, when a kid comes to me and wants to talk about X, Y, or Z, what am I supposed to do? And I think this tells them, here's what you do. Here are the people who are trained to do this. So that's my, that's my plan unless you choose to object. And then finally, you are going to need to deal with committee assignments and I want to take this opportunity to let you know that I've been talking to Matt Upton. And again, probably in, in June, I don't know if you're going to like it or not, but we're going to propose to you a more efficient meeting schedule that you might consider on a monthly basis. And if you do it, we'll probably start using the committees more. So some of those committees, like Building and Grounds that haven't met in a while, Policy that's meeting once a year now, although that's pretty cool, we'll, we'll incorporate that into a proposed regular schedule. You've been having a lot of meetings. I mean, if there's, if there's been one sort of snake bite that goes with shared services, we have a lot of meetings. So again, I don't know if you're going to love what we come up with, but we're going to give you something to talk about at least and, and see how you feel.
Awesome.
I'm done.
No, you're not.
Oh, boy.
Don't you want to talk about the graduation and last day of school?
Oh, that's coming up, that's an option. Yeah, you can do it now, you can do whatever you want.
Do we need to do committees now or?
Oh, it is, it is next, isn't it, last day of school? Do whatever you want with committees.
I know how committees we have, do we have a list?
There is a list, it's in your, it's in your thing.
Can you make one of these for us? Committee is here.
Debbie did it, I don't do anything, you know.
So as far as committees, I'm just wondering, I thought we talked about this last year, is it not having the Technology Committee be a board committee?
We haven't had a board member attend a Technology Committee meeting, I think, except in Alton.
Well, they're a three-day team in the afternoon.
Yeah. You, you made that decision with professional development a couple of years ago.
So if we get down, maybe we'll make a motion.
So we're going to eliminate some committees, is that what you're saying, rather than have them on the docket, just eliminate them, right?
Yeah, well, let's write down the beginning here.
Your old SAU Study Committee became the Shared Services Committee. I just, I just did, you know, what I would have done with that committee, I just did during my report tonight. And I hope under five minutes.
I think we'll need that committee next year because we'll be hitting the end of our MOU, right? We're going to have to figure out what to do.
Alright, we'll start from the beginning. Finance Committee, uh, usually needs a, we'll bring in four members, two from each town.
So the next page has the people who sat last year, is that so?
Nope. So, we need to do nominations or people can just choose, you can just choose.
So, you can appoint technically.
I will be nice first and. Alton, who would like to be on the Finance Committee from Alton?
Well, I think Rebecca wants to be on it. I think she's more than eager.
Does she never go?
I'm sorry, what?
She never comes to the meeting.
She hasn't come to the Finance Committee meetings?
Not on a regular basis. That's why we didn't have a meeting tonight.
Well, we were there, but we couldn't have a meeting.
Okay.
No, we're missing Karen, so we need.
I know.
Jason, you can ask for feedback by email and then.
What he just said, alright, send me emails.
Then we don't have to.
Also, what was the, we met for a while.
Anyone who doesn't email you, you appoint.
Yeah.
Well, I think Matt's, the regular meeting?
Yeah.
It said we were meeting again in, in May.
Right, so that's not on here either.
I think that's like a.
Yeah.
It's not like an official committee.
So which ones do we need to?
So it looks like Finance, Buildings and Grounds, inactive, inactive.
And the SAU Study is new, so we need to.
So do we need Professional Development or we get rid of that?
You already did, you haven't had a representative on PD for.
Technology, we're going to say no because someone can make it anyways. Negotiations is in, Policy Committee, and then the Shared Services, which was SAU Study.
So you'd be down to five. Finance, Building and Grounds, Negotiations, Policy, Shared Services. Negotiations next year, next year, we don't have a JMA.
That's like Pam and I volunteering.
I mean, too.
Yeah, I wanted to do that one, too.
I've done a lot of negotiating the last couple of years.
So, so really for the Joint Board next year, you have four committees to fill.
We don't need Negotiations next year, so, okay.
So we have Finance, Building and Grounds.
We have to.
What are the other ones?
Policy, your favorite.
I love Policy.
And Shared Services.
Let's not get into that.
Shared Services is that, SAU Study.
We're good on Policy.
And you want two, two from each town on that one also.
The Finance Committee meets every month, right before then.
I'm just wondering, we have a new member, so I'm wondering if we should take a minute to just. I'm just wondering, we have a new member, so I'm wondering if we should take a minute to discuss the Alton side of it just to see what you guys are comfortable serving on, because we can, those of us who have been on the board for a while can readjust a little bit. Or Lauren, if you want to talk about it by email.
I can be on any committee, really. It doesn't, I have, it doesn't matter. I don't know how much experience I can provide to the finance committee.
Yeah, that's one I wouldn't recommend.
So.
Policy, those, is that kind of a natural fit for you? And I know, Anne, you're on that committee, but.
That's right, Pam, so.
So she's on the committee that meets once a year.
Yes. Not being helpful at this point in the evening.
So let's give a month to the next meeting.
She's from another school now.
Yeah.
So we can wait till.
There's two.
Policy is just one.
So let's wait, let's wait till the month.
Who are you mailing? You?
Me.
It does say two.
So.
Which is different than.
Yeah. Give me something before next month, and then we can go for next, next meeting this month, stuff you're interested in, and then we'll go from there.
I mean, I think it's a, it's a bigger discussion if you're going to be talking about more meetings, right?
They need to hear what his proposals.
I'm going to be flat-out honest, because why wouldn't I be? Who wants to meet more? No one. No one wants to meet more.
Don't even make.
You retired.
Oh, yeah. PJs, remember?
In the interest of streamlining these things, then that's fine. Then I think people may be more amenable to volunteering even more of their time. But I feel like just increasing meeting times is it's a difficult, it's a big ask.
I think the one that meets the most seems to be the finance committee, to say, meet every month.
And should be building grounds, too.
So I'll work with Matt and bring it in May. All right. And again, I'm not sure you're going to, I'm tempted to tell you what the main idea is, but that could take us off on a left turn, so I'll bring it in May.
Yeah.
So just think about what you might want to be on.
I think, I'll give you this part of the main idea. It's to only have meetings during one week of each month.
Or both. Say that again?
I'll give you the rest of it next month.
Say that hint again.
You would, you would only have meetings one week of the month.
One week.
Wait a month.
The other thing I'd just like to bring up, and we don't really have to discuss it, but I know in Alton we started to give a stipend to our budget committee representative. Is it possible to give finance committee reps stipends at the JMA? Because it really is time-consuming.
I think it's more time-consuming than any other committee.
I also think that Chair should get a stipend at the JMA.
Right, that's, that's exactly it. As I said, it's brutal.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
But the JMA one, I mean, it's every month, but I feel like the elementary one's a lot, too, because you've got to go to the town meetings. Like, so it's like four additional meetings in January. Like, it's just, it's a lot. I mean, I have three kids. Like, I'm getting home at like nine o'clock at night.
It's Lauren's first meeting.
I know.
You can't talk like this.
So we'll talk about it in May. Well, then, I'll go, all right.
And so in May, you know, look and see if there was my, if we did stipends.
Tim can research and give us a proposal.
I'll, I'll work with that. We'll get, we'll get a whole thing. Again, I don't know if you're going to like it, but we've been talking, we've been talking about this for two years. Because I go to a lot of meetings, too. And Heidi goes to a lot of meetings.
All right, so who would have to make? Next up is the Scholarship Foundation.
No, I'm done. You're done with my report. You're an action name now.
Okay, action name. So we did donation already. Last day of school.
So I think every school in the state's going to be counting hours. Under regulation in New Hampshire, you can either have 180 days of school on your calendar or 945 hours for kindergarten through eighth grade, 990, I think it is, hours at a high school. So with the four, only four missed days at the high school because of the three remote days that we held, but eight days at Alton Central School. There's an extra one there because of the burst sprinkler pipe that froze. We lost a day to that. And then seven days at Barnstead. Well, we don't need to get anything waived by the commissioner because if we go to school until Thursday, the 22nd, that being a half-day, that Thursday, everybody's good. Graduation goes as would have, I think, been planned anyway, right?
For some reason, the kids thought it was the ninth.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's what people have been telling me. Yeah, the ninth.
A lot of people think that graduation is the ninth.
No, this is our first discussion.
That's pretty interesting. So it must be a kid rumor, then, because that's what I was hearing, the ninth.
Right. I, I would like to go on record to say a lot of people are planning on June 9th for high school graduation. So I really have some objections to having it June 16th. I think this is also, yeah, I'm just.
It's news to us, so you can, you can.
That's interesting.
Right. Carol, what was your?
The kids that I've been hearing from have said June 9th. I'm just.
Well, do you think that's because that's typically when it is? Just knowing from the recital, like normally the recital's Father's Day weekend, which would be, now it wouldn't be able to be then.
Yeah, the recital would be the weekend they typically have.
So we think it's more just that, that's what they're used to.
I'm just reporting what I hear. I'm not making a judgment about it. I'm just telling you what I've heard is June 9th. That's all.
Well, what do we have for requirements that we have?
But they may not meet the requirements, Anne, if they do June 9th.
They must be.
Their seniors have fewer days than the other kids do. They don't have to be in school as many days. I know that for sure.
If the graduation date was pushed back, would, when would the last day of classes be for seniors? Would it still be June 2nd or whatever it is, or would it be pushed back a week further?
Senior, that rule is actually pretty ambiguous because it says 175 days for seniors where everyone else is at 180 days. But then it doesn't say anything about the hours. And we're not, we're not doing 180 days. Again, I don't think anybody in the state will be after our snow experiences this year. So it really is the case that the regulation doesn't make sense. Graduation is not supposed to take place more than five days before the last day for everybody else, which is where the 175 comes from, except, whether it's in writing or just a tradition in the state, if graduation has been scheduled, it doesn't have to be changed if the rest of the school year is extended. So if the board's understanding is that graduation was scheduled for the ninth, then I would argue it doesn't have to be extended. I would only point out that we've never scheduled it. But that doesn't mean that you, if you say it's the ninth, it's the ninth. You're the board.
Look, I'm not picking a random day. I feel like I've seen Jan, June 9th. What? So the. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we keep graduation on June 9th.
I'll second that. Oh, can I, with a spice to it?
Yep.
Okay.
So the proposed calendar that you just gave us has a tentative, graduation day of blank. So I'm wondering what last year's calendar says.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, Lauren.
I believe that it says June 9th. I really do. Tentative, and what is the date it's listed? It's on my refrigerator.
Bring it up.
It does, it doesn't.
It does say June 9th.
I saw June 9th.
Yeah.
Like, eight months ago, I looked. It said June 9th.
Right.
On the calendar, right?
Yes, on the calendar. It said June 9th, and it did not say tentative, correct?
A few years ago, when they changed.
It always says tentative because it's snow.
Yeah, but I thought when they changed the guidelines, it said when you have it set, you can keep it.
Yes, that is correct. If you've got it set, it doesn't need to be extended. So.
He's probably scheduled right now.
If it's set, it's set. That's fine. And
well, and, but I feel like.
If you say it's on June 9th, it's on.
I'd just like to give.
This is New Hampshire.
It says tentative.
They're free of justice. Come on.
So it says June 9th on the calendar, but it says tentative. I'd just like to give Jay a chance to weigh in to see if that would be an issue.
Yeah.
We're in discussion right now.
Get out of here. Way in, Jay.
It does not matter to me.
Okay.
I will be there hosting.
I mean, I, so.
It says tentative on the schedule for June 9th.
Yeah.
It says June 9th on the calendar.
So what's on our website is the calendar that does say tentative graduation day, June 9th.
Okay.
As far as students go, I can tell you that almost every single senior specifically or student in the building strongly believes that it is June 9th.
Well, then that's, that's what it is.
That's what I'm hearing.
People have probably already purchased tickets or liked tickets.
Let's just pretend this never happened, and we'll see you all on June 9th.
Okay. Sure, the kids will be happy.
So moving forward, though, can we make sure that we put
This is a while.
That date.
Instead of tentative, you just make the date because that way it's, you don't have to move it.
So, because, I mean, I don't, I don't have a senior yet, but that's a big deal. Like, people probably have family coming in.
Yeah, makes sense, right.
If we have the ability to set it, let's set it.
Right, I agree.
And then we're not having this discussion every year.
That's really good.
You do have the authority to set it.
Yeah.
And once it's set, the way, the way regulation has been interpreted in New Hampshire, once it's set, you don't have to change it regardless of your snow day experience.
And I think that's a good weekend because it doesn't interfere with the Father's Day weekend and the other, you know.
Well, isn't that motorcycle weekend somewhere in there?
That is motorcycle weekend.
Oh, it is, okay. Well, I guess, I guess.
Well, so.
Are you going to have to choose between the two curbs?
It's 100 days long this year.
We do have a motion on the floor, and it's second. And since it says tentative, actually, I'll call, I'll call a vote on it. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's keep the ninth.
So graduation, the ninth, the last day of school, the Thursday, the 22nd, a half-day.
For all the schools? All three?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like it to be earlier.
We've gone to school on the 22nd before.
All right, so really good. What's next here?
I'm glad they allowed us to count hours, so.
Yep. So next up is a early graduation.
Request.
Request. Jay.
I'm making the recommendation for Rebecca Hopkins to graduate early, the end of the school year.
Did she write a letter?
Yeah, she's met the requirements that are outlined in Policy IKFA.
They don't have to write a letter? They don't have to write?
They, yeah, they submit a letter to the counselor indicating their formal plans to this correspondence with parents as well, and then their five-year plan.
Oh, I thought, okay.
That stuff was submitted to.
We used to receive them as board members, but then they stopped that, I think, last year. They stopped coming, so.
Yeah, I thought we were notified earlier than this. It seems like last mail a week.
Yeah, this.
Yeah, this was, this was a recent addition.
It was, of course, yeah.
Okay.
So.
I don't have any objection as long as you don't have.
No, I would just like to see the letter that they write. I think that it's, if they take the, I mean, that's, you know, putting it on them to write the letter, and I think that it's worth reading as a board and, and hearing what their plan is.
We can, we can start doing that again. We used to. We stopped, but we can certainly put that in place moving forward.
I see consensus around the room. People, I guess, want it, so.
Yeah, yeah. I move that we accept, approve early graduation for Rebecca Hopkins.
Second. Second, with congratulations.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is she with, June 9th?
Okay, number four, History Club Overnight Field Trip.
Make a motion to approve the History Club Field Trip as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes. 2024 World Cultures Club Field Trip.
Make a motion to approve the 2024 World, like, Europe trip.
The Europe trip, the second. Ireland, that's tough. Do you need chaparras?
Discussion.
I know.
Just out of curiosity.
Well, this group's going to Europe. I'm going to Ireland same time that this group's going, because Laney's going on this trip overseas. My kid.
She's still in April, this April?
Yeah, and then we're going to Ireland sometime. We justify that.
Yeah, why not? Yeah. No, I think Libby's more excited about seeing Anne Frank's home. That's the thing she's most, I said, what about Paris, you know? No, no. Want to see Anne Frank's home. Yeah, no, Ireland, that's cool.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none. All right, we have DFA Investment Policy.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve Policy DFA Prospect Mountain High School Investment.
Second.
Is this just the annual?
It is.
It's an annual, there's no change.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. Okay, personnel, professional staff nominations.
So you have the packet sheet that you're accustomed to with one resignation and some coach appointments. You may wish to act on that first. And then on the table, I have an additional personnel handout with other items in it. Do you want to deal with this one first?
Yep, this one first.
I move we accept the resignation of Jamie Babbage with regret. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
I, I am move we accept the appointment of the five listed coaches.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, I'll pass.
So I have a personnel memo for you here on the table to the left of your packets. First, there's a renomination list of professional staff, those eligible for tenure under RSA 18914A. In New Hampshire, an educator, after being reappointed for the fifth year, after, sorry, the fifth year, after five years in the same school district, is granted tenure by state law. Tenure rights in New Hampshire mean that if that educator is ever subsequently not renominated, he or she is eligible to request a hearing before the school board. And at that hearing, the superintendent has to show cause, just cause, for the failure to renominate. Educators who have had tenure in another school before coming to the district can then get tenure after three years instead of five. So what you find here on the first page is a list of those who already have tenure, and then two who, if reappointed by the board based on this renomination, will achieve tenure status. And then on the next page, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 educators nominated for reappointment who will still not have tenure after this action.
I move that we nominate the teachers as provided.
Second.
Further discussion?
There are two on the non-tenured list that don't have years listed.
That's because this is year one.
Oh, okay, so they have one year on service. Okay.
So next year, they'll have one.
All righty. I misunderstood. The others have one because they work from 2021. I get it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
The next sheet includes a non-public discussion that I'd like to have with you. And then the third thing in this packet is an FYI. This is a list of anticipated openings that we will be advertising within the next few days. Just because it's here doesn't mean it's open, but anticipated.
So at the high school, we're advertising for Title I person?
Yeah, so we are advertising everywhere for Title I reading intervention so that we can generate applications and then see what we have.
Okay.
We have enough funding. I know everyone is aware that we intend to use some of that funding to fund the existing position here in the library, but there is other funding in that grant.
Oh, there is, okay.
So one of the things that Matt Jazokas and I have been talking about is using some of that money from the Title I grant in each of the three school districts to fund somebody who works across all three schools with the Title I teachers in the Title I programs so that they aren't each having to create their own criteria and figure out their own, you know, just, there's, there's a certain amount of administrative work that it takes to run that program that we could probably do in a more efficient way.
Sure.
By consolidating.
Okay.
And, and we could do full-time, we could do part-time. We have a lot of flexibility. So that's, that's what some of this is. Last year, we advertised for a school psychologist to work all the way across the district. We didn't get an application for that position. We didn't get an application for that position, so we filled that with, with an outsourced partner. This year, that costs a little bit more, but it has worked. We're advertising anyway, just to see if we get any candidates. Same thing with speech pathologists. We employ one speech pathologist at Alton Central School and two speech pathologists at Barnstead Elementary School, and then we outsource speech services here at the high school for two days a week at a cost of $100,000.
Really?
So it seems like by advertising, maybe we can find an employee to work with the other employees and a more efficient way of doing this. So it's just, we're, we're advertising things just to find out if we can get applicants for some of them, and then we can think about the best way to deploy people after that.
Any other concerns? All right, we're at our next public input, once, twice, dawn. Looks like we have a bunch of future agenda items. Is there anything else to be added to this?
Yeah, non-union employee benefits I've been talking to you about for months, and Matt and Jay are working on his ed ELOs. So those are on there. I don't know if it'll be May or June, but I've added them to my list.
We'll also need to put on the evaluation again, since that was rejected. Not sure why. I'd love to hear why.
Since I did hear that Buildings and Grounds hasn't met for a while, I'm probably doing the meeting. Is anybody opposed to the current Board of, that's on there right now, Buildings and Grounds meeting before next meeting, so we catch up on things before we restructure? So I'm like, we should do that properly?
That's great.
All right, so Buildings and Grounds will meet.
What time, 5:30 or 6:00?
6:00.
It used to be 4:30.
Yeah.
4:30?
It used to be 4:30 Building and Grounds, 5:30 Finance, and then 6:30 is the full Board. That's.
It's just at 6:00, there's nobody going that day, so 6:00 works fine.
Well, Finance always.
We will have to have a Finance meeting next month.
You will.
Which I know it doesn't exist, but I need, we need the assessment. Unless you just wanna present it here, it's up to you, but we do have things that need to be presented.
What time is Finance wanting to meet?
We meet at 5:30.
Do you need more than a half hour or?
It depends. Probably not.
Heidi would know better.
Please remember this conversation next month when I bring you a different way of thinking about a meeting schedule.
So how many people are on both committees? I guess that's the question. Are you on both committees?
No. I mean, we can stick with what we're currently on until we figure it out.
So why can't two committees meet at the same time?
Because they both need to be.
Oh, you want to be, to be honest?
Unless you're okay with Heidi meeting with the Finance Committee and me meeting with the Building and Grounds Committee, which.
I think that would work.
Why can't they meet in the same space?
Yell at each other?
No, but I mean.
I just think if you need him, we'll let you have him. You know, we'll have the Building and Grounds.
I'd rather go Buildings and Grounds.
So why don't we do Finance, why don't you do Finance at 5:30, Buildings and Grounds at 6:00, and then if somebody needs to jump over to Buildings and Grounds because you might be wrapped up by then, just jump over to Buildings and Grounds. Does that work?
Yeah.
It would just be them, like the.
Yeah.
Yeah, just meet right in here.
That way you can have Tim for the first part of it.
Perfect. All right, any other business? Seeing none. We do have a non-public, so we'll listen.
I move that we enter non-public under RSA 91A-A colon 32A.
Second.
Do roll calls on Brandon?
Uh, yes.
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 We are now in non-public.
Does Jay need to stay? That's the question.
I don't know, he's staying. Take a good turn, I'll say it.
I wanna know.